Good evening. The RONBY Board of Education meeting, uh, work session meeting is called the order. The Board of Education is in compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 until the open public meeting act. The time, date, location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, RONBY Post Office, Mary Bolts, Haley and Bingham, Grace Downing, and RONBY Public School District website are being our work session meeting is now open.
I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dare? Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Beebe?
Here.
Ms. Shabakhan?
Here.
Ms. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Flaherty?
Here.
Ms. Shabakhan Alzo?
Here.
Ms. Kanzarala?
Here.
Ms. Spalding?
Here.
All right, um, before Dr. McCarron starts with the Park Overview today, Mrs. Jesse will not be at the board meeting this evening due to a personal issue she has to have us scheduled today. And so if you have any questions regarding for board report or anything like that, I will get those questions to her tomorrow and she will make back or you know, you can call me if you do. Uh, and Mr. Winkles, Brett was down watching some of those best part one, so that would be your short synopsis. And we do have also our choir. They're performing one of the songs they did, you know, a little Christmas throwback to it, but uh, but also I think they're gonna be, um, got, I don't know.
I'll be saying that last week at the Freeholders' Meet.
They'll do a nice job, so we'll afford to have some of these too tonight. That's why the piano is taking up some of our spot, so we're excited to have it. And then after Dr. McCarron presents, if you have any questions, um, regarding Park, this is something that's been kind of lately the last couple of weeks is kind of a little push to march and hear some more stuff about it, and a deal of those things as they come as the board, you know, it's difficult for people for ourselves to have, and I don't share my personal opinions about Park because it's not my place here to do that, but we just try to give people the facts. And the facts change from week to week from state, everything else can happen. So if you have any questions, Dr. McCarron, I can answer, everybody answer this tonight. We're just gonna show you some of the differences, what the Park's look like compared to New Jersey ASK and what it's, what it's all about.
And just to add a little bit more, I just wanted every board member to be informed properly because I have been receiving a lot of questions from our residents and specifically our parents about Park and different things. So I wanted us all to have an overview. I know Dr. McCarron went to a couple, um, I guess they were meetings or seminars-
Up to this past morning.
-in the past week. So I just wanted them to know, I just wanted all of you to know that most up-to-date information so when people approach us, we know what to say. Because I am in education and I don't know what to say, so.
There's probably a few that have not an idea what to say because they'll tell us one thing and mean who we go to, and then two days later you get another from the state saying, I think there exists, these things can happen. But if you ever do hear something and you're not sure, just call us and we'll be happy to reach out to those people, um, you know, and answer with the best of our ability.
Okay, quick question right now then?
Sure.
I mean, you go back and forth a lot of, I know it's probably nonsense, but a lot of people are saying you can opt out of it when you're saying you can't.
I'll be addressing all of that.
Do you have a, um- A lot of policies in place that you can look at that address our situations.
Do you have an iPad, uh, from Carman?
Just trying to choose.
Oh, never mind.
You're fine.
Yeah, there's always been a belief that we refuse to do any kind of standardized testing in the past, and this is really not the, it's a done that, it's nothing new. They probably go back to Iowa testing or Terranova testing and cat, yeah, everything, yeah, all that kind of stuff, so that's what I, Dr. McCarron, why don't you start and the questions regarding that?
So as we said, um, there is a large movement that we probably have been there a lot of talk about. As Mr. Arndt just said, we're speaking of school administration and we're informing you as Board of Education members. As far as informing you of what the Park Assessment is, what we're looking at, and what the expectations are from Park. Park has taken over from New Jersey ASK, so it's assessing math and language arts. The New Jersey ASK, over the past three years that it was administered, had changed its specifications each year based on standards, going from the core curriculum content standards moving to the Common Core standards. So up until last year, last year was actually the first time that our students even saw the New Jersey ASK with all Common Core standards being applied in both math and language arts. New Jersey ASK, first part, both used to measure knowledge at grade level, Common Core and reasoning skills. Um, in some cases, it's looking for a student's ability many times to be able to process through the information and follow the tasks at hand. With the Park versus New Jersey ASK, sometimes you might say that there's multi-steps within an answer. And a student might not be getting scored necessarily on their final answer, but their ability to follow those steps as they go through the process. So it's asking for them to pull the main idea up. That might be one part that they're looking for. Can they pull main ideas? The next part might be, can they identify the supporting details for each main idea within a paragraph? Are they able to do that? And then finally, what's one line that might pull everything together from the main ideas and the supporting details? How would you summarize it? So in essence alone, you have three parts, so it might be getting scored on different levels for each of those parts.
So you're saying that part of the Park test isn't the right or wrong, it's how they're getting to the answer?
Correct. And the ability to be reasoning through that. So even with math, you might get to a final answer, they might not be looking necessarily for that final answer.
In some situations, they might be.
They might be looking to see what things were you able to pull that they were asking you to do to get to the answer that you were able to get to, and were you able to follow that?
Is it like that on SAT as well, or is that a right or wrong?
Many have this right or wrong. Um, Park will be conducted online. Accommodations, of course, will be given when needed. And when I say that, that means that the AP, um, the special education accommodations that might be given could be an alternate assessment that the students are given, or it might be a paper-based assessment that the students are given based on their IEPs that have been designated by the child study team. Um, ability to secure assessments easily. With New Jersey ASK, if you've ever been in a school during New Jersey ASK, or if you're a teacher, it's complete lockdown, meaning you secure hallways, everything's accounted for. If one booklet's missing or out of order, everything stops, no one moves. With the Park Assessment, it's online, which means there's certain levels of security. So for myself as the district test coordinator, I can open it up for the day, I can close it for the day. It can't go past that point. Um, students can't go into other sections. Teachers used to be very concerned because you would have five sections on the desk for the entire New Jersey ASK. And if a student rips open the wrong section, you have to stop things. Our irregularity report was written. With the Park, they're given a small, usually at the five to 10-letter code. The teacher will place that on the board, and the student will only be allowed into the section based on that code. And the codes are generated each day by myself, given out to staff, and then students are able to log in that way. Flexibility in scheduling, I'm gonna go into the schedule a little bit more. With New Jersey ASK, we used to have to ask for waivers because we are a K-8 district. The way we were set up, they used to test three and four one week, five and six another week, seven and eight another week. We used to have to ask for a waiver because the way our building is set up, it would put each wing into a lockdown mode for a two-week time period. So we would ask for a fourth and fifth to test together, and also six, seven, and eight. With the Park Assessment, it gives us a full month timeline that we can pretty much assess students at any point in time over the course of that month, um, on the Park Assessment. Ability to cure assessments easily, I kind of spoke to that, and then more availability to sample the problems. One of the issues we have with the New Jersey ASK was the fact that when you went online, you would see the same problems year after year after year because they didn't have enough staff creating new problems for their banks to supply other things. They were reusing them year after year. With the Park Assessment, since you have multiple states participating, they have a larger bank of questions and problems and things for parents, students, staff members to look at to get an idea of what they're looking at for the Park Assessment. Any questions before I move on? There's two testing periods. The first testing period is the performance-based assessment. This assessment is supposed to be administered at about the 75% mark of the school year. So once 75% of the education has taken place, which they've identified as March 2nd through March 27th, that assessment should be given. Looking at that, one of the first things that we've said as a staff is, you look at when the performance-based assessment's given, you look at where the end of year, there's pretty much a four-week time period. The end-of-year assessment is supposed to be at the 90% mark of instruction taking place. That being said, we do have flexibility in terms of when we give the assessment. So we might choose to give the performance-based assessment during the first two weeks, and then the end-of-year assessment probably during the second and third week that we're allowed to give it, always wanting to leave ourselves that one extra week of time should something go wrong. Knowing that this assessment's being given across the entire state, knowing that on our end, we've made many upgrades to make sure that we're able to handle the software, there could be problems on the other end. And if that's the case, we're not gonna waste time, we're gonna move students right back to instruction and not waste any time trying to fix the problem at that moment, but just reschedule it for another point in time. Um, RONBY is very fortunate in the amount of technology that we have available between our one-to-one initiative, and I'll be talking about that later, and also our updated labs. We have a lot more flexibility when it comes to scheduling because we're not stuck with only two labs in one building and two cards, but we have more availability throughout the district for students to be assessed on.
Question. Is that equate to 75 and 90? And if this is done throughout major different states, not all states have a 10-month school year, some have a 12-month school year, so is that what?
In the state of New Jersey, these were the testing dates that were given. Um, and that could also be based on the fact that the end of June being the 90% out and beginning of March being at about 75. So we figure 10 months each month is about 10% of that year, so it's a 15% difference. So that's why we said, to make sure that it's 75 and 90 percentile, we would do it the first two weeks for the performance-based assessment, and then weeks two and three for the end of year, trying to give ourselves some flexibility.
So does it weigh too much of these 75?
Just about, yeah.
Assuming that the year ends-
Because it's over a month. Because it's over a month time span that we will be putting between the two assessment periods. So when you look at 15%, that's about six weeks. So we're putting about five weeks in between the two assessments to make sure that we have that. We could put six weeks, the only issue that we would have though is that backs us up right to the very last day that we have. So I mean, that being said, it might be, we might start in the middle and end in the middle of the last week available, still giving us two to three days if we have any technical problems.
This is a national test, not state test?
Correct, it's through, um, I think at this point in time, I won't say there's not states participating?
Seventeen.
No, there were 17, but then, um, certain states are only doing parts of it. We're looking at the full participation, I'm saying that.
So do you compare the two different?
Well, you guys, you get a cumulative score between the two, the PVA and the end-of-year assessment. And then that score would be the final score that the student would receive.
And what's the difference though? Can we get to that next question?
The performance-based assessment, administered close to the end of the school year if possible. In language arts, the performance-based will focus on writing effectively when analyzing text. So that means that they're gonna be looking at two pieces of, two articles, which is done in many language arts classrooms, and doing a compare and contrast between the two, finding similarities and differences, and writing to those similarities and differences.
I suppose something like in the past, I'll just give you a picture of a girl walking around, you know, fields of daisies, and you're supposed to write as a sixth or seventh layer, you know, what does this picture show?
Or a poem prompt where you would be given a poem and-
Now it's more analyzing text, pulling things, utilizing that text to, I don't know, reading comprehension piece too.
Right.
It's pulling more critical thinking skills.
And then the end-of-year assessment, what's the, what's the difference between the two?
Looking at it, the end-of-year assessment focuses more on reading comprehension and final scores, whereas the performance-based assessment's really, the performance-based assessment has about one more day than the end-of-year assessment does, and the performance-based assessment looks more at the critical thinking, reasoning skills, whereas the end-of-year assessment would be more of like your standardized reading comprehension, reading a passage, answering questions that go along with the passage, maybe short句子, but not as in-depth as the compare and contrast and analyzing that you would see in many language arts and math on the performance-based assessment.
So the purpose of the one month in between, you just to give them one week from taking a test?
More or less, because it's not nearly the same.
Because it's just too much all at one time is the purpose. So you're not comparing the other, you're really-
It's allowing you, you're not comparing those two, you're combining those two.
You're comparing that, gotcha.
And it's just spreading it out as well.
Okay. So I have two questions. So I don't know that, um, there's always, Park is our state, is our new state test.
Correct.
New Jersey ASK was, was given once a year or twice a year?
Was given once a year.
Once a year, that's right though. So the point of having the states testing is because of, because of the federal government wanting everyone to have a state test?
A state assessment to measure where your students are at a regular progress.
So you have to have something?
Correct.
And this is the only something to have?
Yes.
This is what we have, and other states have done smarter than us.
No, but what I'm saying is within our state.
This is what has been selected for our state to use.
Exactly, so I, I, well, the reason I'm saying is, is because it's not like RONBY volunteered to take on this testing program, which I don't know that everyone understands that in the front.
What RONBY did volunteer to do was knowing that this was coming, we did volunteer to do the piloting, the share-
Last year, right.
Which I will say gave us a lot of insight, and for me as a district test coordinator, I feel a lot more comfort going into the test, knowing what to expect. Um, and I try to simplify things as much as possible, I don't want to make more out of anything if it's not needed, and you know, hopefully that's coming across the staff and then trickling down to students as well.
Right, no, I understand, but it's just not, it's absolutely not-
It's not our fault.
Too many people think there's options, that you choose this, is what she's saying.
Yeah, but it's not, this is the state, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
They're created and volunteered to make this, the test of choice.
No. The perception in the general public of parents is, why would you change, or why did you choose this, or it's not a different thing.
But total negativity.
Correct, correct. But again, the negativity comes from the non-knowledge of one, that's all it is. The negativity is strictly based on the lack of knowledge, correct. Correct.
Changes that will alter any situation.
Right.
No, that's fine. Preparing for Park. RONBY School has been preparing for computerized assessments for the past couple of years. Prior to even knowing that Park was coming, RONBY started with the math assessment.
How many years ago was that?
Seven or eight years ago. So knowing that that was a trend that students were going to be seeing, and once we as a district know what results we're gonna get back from the Park, we'll then be able to assess how we're assessing our students. Is it necessary for us to use different assessment pieces, or can we even narrow down on the assessment pieces that are given to our students? Um, we have upgrades to wireless throughout the entire district, that's access points and also the increased wireless speeds, so that way we were able to handle the one-to-one initiative and even, um, the hardwiring that we have throughout the buildings.
Do they use, only three? Can you use, do they have to use it, um, to take the test, can they use their program?
Yes.
So they'll be, they'll know, they'll-
They're comfortable with it, yes, yes.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, upgrades to servers throughout the district, we did a lot of upgrades to servers last, last summer. Replacement of computer labs, and making sure that we're keeping up with the warranties in each of our computer labs, and making sure that when those warranties are out, we're using those computers in other capacities throughout the district, but then we're making sure that the computer labs are the most updated within the district.
Again, Dr. McCarron, we've been doing this now even when I was still building Presley, we were planning, we knew about this four or five years ago. You know, and the biggest concept was the rollout. We went to the, you should show all the high, you know, fire administration, we went to these different things the state was giving, which our infrastructure looked like, can handle? Our technology plan, we passed the rest of, it's all been, it's upgraded, deepfened a little bit, so we're not, it's always all of a sudden, you know, we scramble in this past six months, we may, we slowly follow their timelines, see what I was doing, it's hasn't just all of a sudden somebody's idea that happened this year, this has been a planned out for, I'd say, four, five years.
I don't believe that any of us on this board feel that way. Um, and it's just, it's just that, uh, you know, I, yes, I had a personal conversation with you, I wanted all of us to be prepared because there's a lot of negativity and a lot of the parents and a lot of the community members in this town, and quite frankly, some of us personally have, you know, have, there's just a lot of negativity, a lot of, um, true, like, a lot of misinformation out there. So, but we have been doing quite a bit to, to prepare ourselves.
And we weren't ready, I'll be honest with you, we'd say, you know, if you was the person to take, we're not ready as a district, if you take this, but we're, we're, what, we'll all be on, I mean, some students will take it.
I don't wanna have to take that, but nevermind.
But there are some districts that- These are, unfortunately, don't have, and they can't do that.
But, yeah, and that's a key point, though, keep in mind that a lot of times the anger comes from the fact that some schools are stopping instruction, stopping things to prepare and to change the schedule around to accommodate the assessment. We aren't in that place, so keep that in mind also as we might hear from people outside or that's who people are communicating amongst as well. Um, and then of course interactive whiteboards, which we currently have in each of our classrooms where instruction takes place.
Is some of this information being put out on our website to help inform parents?
Well, this, this, I'm gonna ask that this be put on our Facebook and Dan's blog and our-
But I think Amy made a good point that we maybe need to add at the end of going through this, is that this is not an assessment that the RONBY School District can take, this is the assessment that the state has implemented and we must use.
Absolutely.
Just, just an opinion, I mean, right now, I think the perception is going through social media, and I know that I've, I haven't seen it, but pointing out, I mean, sadly, this is the first year it's been put out, correct?
Exactly.
So, one, I think you need to start educating people, so there's sample questions being pitched around on my, on social media saying, this is a question, so if this is, I guess my question is, is that realistic? If somebody already has a sample question from the test, that's, that is a real question.
Correct.
So that is right.
You, anyone can go onto the Park website, select a grade level, select a subject area, and take 13 sample questions.
Kids are doing that. Correct. More or less to prepare them, perhaps, for our teachers.
Again, when I'm teaching, it doesn't, it's just my business, as I said, how you can use it, how you click and drag, how to manipulate it.
Making sure they're prepared.
And they're doing a nice job. So for the kids-
They're fine. Let's remember, the kids are all fine with this, not that the kids are like stressed out.
So the, and that's why I asked the sample, the sample questions that are out, and I haven't looked at them really too in depth. What do they look? And if it's going from educators, I've been out of education for a while, but-
They're difficult.
They're different.
And they're different. They don't look like anything that you and I ever taught them. And our kids, our little guys are gonna have to go on and copy and paste and click and drag, and see, for you and I, that seems like-
Intimidating almost.
But to them-
They're used to it.
They're used to it. Because I have to tell you, like, I, I went on a couple and I was panicking even as an educator because, you know, like, I'm gonna be assessed on this, if my students do well.
And the kids will say, hold on, let me show you.
But something to also consider too is, what, when you take all these states and you're polling all of their best questions together, and you're polling all of their best, a big thing that we've been discussing in this district, and I see Ms. Heinz here is accommodations, and what accessibility features are we turning on, and what accommodations are we giving in? Common Cores and IEPs and our general population, everyone gets accessibility features, and as a district, we decide what, what each student is going to be getting, and sure, give them everything, but then if we give them everything, are we overstimulating them? Right, because now they're gonna be using the masking tools and painting the words red, and painting the words green, and painting the words yellow. We want to give them the toolset they need without overwhelming them with those features. Um, so it's making sure that we're looking at it as a whole, but you basically took every single state participating and what they were doing well, and pulled it all together. So in this case, in many situations, I mean, these are things that they're normally doing. And look, I've had conversations with staff members, and when you look at what they're doing in Park, if I was observing a regular classroom, it's something that they would be doing on a daily basis. They'd be comparing two texts. They'd be pulling information out of the text and summarizing it. They'd be using computers and technology to manipulate information and create things and share things. Our students are doing phenomenal things with the technology that we have and the curriculum that our teachers are implementing. It's a Common Core state standard that we're continuing to use, and when you look back, New Jersey ASK only first started doing Common Core last year, which is why every time I gave the New Jersey ASK presentation, I would tell you, we're comparing apples and oranges, because it's a whole different assessment from one year to the next, and it's a whole different set of students. So hopefully, this is, the goal is to make this a better, easier process, um, and hopefully, one of the reasons why we as a district haven't put much out to the community at this point was because when we go out to the community, we will make sure that we're giving the community the full information and that we know exactly what it is. So as administration, whenever we go to one meeting, and then we get an email from someone else telling me something completely different, I'm now trying to reference check to two pieces to find out what it is we're actually saying.
So that was actually one of my questions anyway. At some point, are we going to, I'm sure we will have, um, some kind of a parent-
Like a pop-
-orientation slash whatever to explain Park more about?
And in addition to that, we'll have things available online, we can advertise that through Facebook. Expectations, students are taught from our curriculum based on the Common Core standards, technology is used through all classes and lessons, and students will try their best on all assignments and assessments they're given. So for us, it's not putting any additional pressure, it's business as usual. Um, when the assessments are done, I mean, they're used to taking the map assessment. Do students stop what they're doing after they do the map assessment? Are they freak, like, are they upset or angry on the morning of the map assessment? No, it's just gonna be business as usual, try your best, it's all you can ask, you don't know an answer, move on to the next one. And then many times, you know, that's what we're asking our teachers to ask of students, that's what we're asking parents to ask of students, is, "Those shall try their best." And then additional information. Some information that I pulled and actually added it to your packet, all this information is also available online, is through, one is through the New Jersey School Boards Association. Okay, so here we go. If you look onto your work session, you're gonna see two things attached. The first one is the New Jersey School Boards Association Park Memo. I thought this would be good for us to just see today because I feel like it answered a lot of the questions that you guys were asking tonight, and this is directly from New Jersey School Boards, and their, what their take is, and what their perspective is, and what their stance is. So with school board members, it tells you exactly what your responses should be as board members. As Mark said, we might have our different opinions as parents, as educators, but as a Board of Education, this is what their take is on it for us to each see. Our school districts require to administer the Park Assessment, their answer is yes. And then in here, it goes into detail as to the Commissioner of Education has the right to implement testing program to measure students' progress towards standards. The states of the Park will be given 14, 15 school year. Most students participate in the Park Assessment, the answer is yes. State regulation contains the following provisions, there's an October 30th memo, there's a link for that memo, but I also attached it within your, um, information this evening. That's also a public, New Jersey Department of Ed, October 30th broadcast from Commissioner Hestie, stating that state law regulations require all students to take state assessments. Do statute regulations or court decisions permit students to opt out of the state testing? The answer is no. New Jersey law regulations require students to participate in the state testing program and do not include opt-out provisions. That being said, can testing be refused? The answer was yes. And in that situation, when you look at the Park Assessment, if I have a student who's in a room during testing, I cannot have that student in that room- I cannot have that student in that room if they are not actively testing. So, if they are not logged into the system, I cannot keep them in that classroom, because that is against security protocols that I have to follow, which are much less than what we had to follow with New Jersey S, but they can't be in during active testing. What actions should a school district take if a student refuses to participate in the Park? In the October thirtieth memo, Dr. Heskey states that we should be following all discipline and attendance policies within the district. Discipline comes into play because if students are absent for X number of days, discipline policies then fall into place. So, that's why that comes there. Um, in making that determination, district leaders should take into consideration testing protocols that we have in place as a district, which we're currently working on, and also looking at what other districts are doing in our area to see what they have. Yes?
Why would, why top down?
Like what? They may example, say, anxiety, it's causing kids too much testing, taking away instructional time. They don't, they're taking away from instructional time, anxiety causes for their children. I mean, this would be the first time we've had kids refuse, and they have, you've got a couple of grandparents who have not sent their kids in six, seven, eight grade during this testing. It's almost too, you know, certain times, just because they want the kids to take the test. Why? I don't know. I don't jump inside people's brains.
No, no, what I'm saying is, there are a lot other than that, it's.
Sometimes people, like, I'm.
I, I, I'm a child.
People are saying that they're supporting teachers, um, because assessments are now a part of a teacher's total observation. But if you look at how a teacher is assessed over the course of a year, the state testing is nearly ten to fifteen percent of a teacher's total assessment.
But at the same time, Mark, at the same time, that, the flip side to that is if they're not participating, the school district, not the teacher, but the school district and the tax base is penalized when we don't get the funding because our absenteeism rate goes up and we're, we're not, we, no.
We get into that, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
See, look, let us.
These are twins, separate, they're first.
Um, what is the impact on the school district if students do not participate?
I don't know, I would penetrate them.
Oh. The level of participation.
Well, that's what the support should have.
Can affect federal funding for K-12 education in New Jersey. Stating to school districts state monitoring, which is Q-SAC. Um, new teacher evaluation process, the school district's ability to design curriculum to meet student academic needs. The federal ESEA requires ninety-five percent of all students and ninety-five percent of student subgroups. So, your subgroup says when we take the whole class and then we break it down into each of the subgroups that the students fall. So, that's your English language learners, economically disadvantaged, um, special education population, that they take the state required assessments. Federal funding of key education programs is dependent upon districts meeting this requirement.
See, I get your mind.
Then we go into attendance. For the past few years, the state has calculated aid to local stu, school districts, partly on their average daily attendance rates. Um, the next one, student growth percentages, that's a part of the teacher assessment model, where the student's overall percentage gives them that ten to fifteen percent score on their final, final, um, sum of evaluation. And then, a low participation rate will affect the amount of information educators need to make informed decisions. So.
So, when do you get the results back from Park?
For this first year, we're told we won't get it until early fall.
So, New Jersey S, though, would come in when?
August.
End of August.
Okay.
What, August?
So, not much difference?
No.
And if a child does poorly, let's use the word poorly, since that's the biggest fear, is they're going to vomit, what happens?
As of right now, I think what we would need to see as a district is what information do we get back from Park? As a district, we have other assessments in place in language arts and mathematics that we can go by. When we look at a student to see if they need extra support, if they, um, depend on the grade level, if they're on a higher grade level, where do they get placed, whether it be in pre-algebra or algebra, we use, we're not using one assessment piece, we're using multiple measures.
Right.
So, if a student is refusing to take the test, that's one less measure that we have to go by. One assessment is students' overall picture of where they fall. At this point in time, what I've taken away is that students will be assessed based on students taking the test at that grade level across the states that are participating. When you look at it from that perspective, I think it will look a lot better for the state of New Jersey, because when you looked at our testing as New Jersey S, we ranked like thirty-six or thirty-seven. But when you looked at the NAEP assessment, which was the national assessment given in eighth and eleventh grade, across the nation, we ranked number three. So, I think when you compare us with other states, we've always kept a higher standard on assessment with New Jersey S. So, now that we're using Park and we're comparing ourselves with other states based on the same questions, I'm curious to see if it shows the same results that the NAEP assessment gave to us previously.
It's a baseline.
Right.
So, if they don't do well, it's not really a bad deal.
If you vom, what I'm saying is, the tests that children received last year and the year before and the year before that, there's no greater consequence for allowing my child to take this test in March and May on them next fall. That's what I'm saying, nothing is, is changing. No, right.
So, the results aren't a placement of the parents.
Not in this district, because we have other, excuse me, we have other ways, like, like.
With other means.
Other means, other, other tests that we look at.
I just, and I have to ask, like, for understanding, so if it's not a placement, you know, they assess the kids, it's a test, it's issue, you know, trying to really, what, what is the test for them? Let me accept.
The purpose is to see where we are academically. So, every year when I present with New Jersey S, one thing that I found in this past year's data, when we reviewed as an administrative team, is that when you looked at every grade level for math, our scores were decreasing by a small percent, five, ten percent, but still five percent either way. And that being said, knowing that last year's assessment piece was a hundred percent Common Core, that told me that with those standards being applied, we needed to look in a different direction, which is why this year, we're piloting and vision math program. And then, we're working with those staff members, we're having other teachers observe to see what's going on, so that way, we can make those curricular decisions.
So, what like Amy was saying, parents fear is the test gets taken by the kid, the kid feels inadequate because of a poor score. Really, it seems like that, that purpose of the test is more for a curriculum base for the teachers and educators rather than the students.
Well, curriculum, because it's used to drive instruction, but it's also how we get assessed at a state level. And when, so as a teacher, though, one of the first things I would do is look at New Jersey S scores. It was four out of three hundred. That meant nothing to me, but I knew that anything between the two hundred and a two forty-nine was proficient. And of course, a two fifty and above was advanced proficient. But that being said, there's that bell curve where they would take those things. And on the New Jersey S, something a lot of people didn't realize was a lot of questions placed in the New Jersey S were dummy questions. They were sample questions that didn't even count for anything. They were just test piloting to see if they worked well, and then they might include them in the next test administration. So.
There's, there's big benefits, it seems like, that, and we talked about the parents being educated that the test provides. Like, people focus on the negative, or like, kid bombed. The benefits, it sounds like, is that it'll be a more streamlined, uh, better educated, educated, if you will, and a better overall, um, learning system for our children as far as what we're efficient on based on these scores. And it benefits for an individual child. Now, so let's say you have a child that, excuse my word, that's very poor on the test. Now, they get to, will they, you're saying that that doesn't, could use all for, like, special means placement, or?
No, because of the timing.
Well, here's what I'm going to say, what if your child is really great on the test? But then I look at their math scores and they bombed it. I look at their grades and their Ds and Fs, and they're like, that's why we always look at the multiple measures, and it's not just one assessment piece that we are looking at. One concern that I might have, though, as a parent could consider, though, is, for example, the algebra program. In eighth grade, we follow the algebra program, two would take. Because if we don't, it's not going to count when we go over to Black Forest Bible and we're trying to make sure that we provide our students every opportunity going from seventh and eighth grade to the high school. But part of their requirements is that they hit certain things. One of those things is New Jersey S score. So, for me, I was a poor test taker, I'll be the first one to tell you that. So, with the SAT, I want to say three times, not the same score every time, but it just wasn't something I was good at. In this situation, you're now removing that one area that the student's being assessed on. And in some cases, it might be two out of three, in other cases, it might be three out of three. So, it's just something to consider.
Right. Um, if I could just add to your, uh, to try and answer your question. The state's also put together a commission to study the assessment in New Jersey. And to kind of answer your question, the focus is on the Common Core state standards being taught. And what it says in their, their study is, one of the reasons why they're doing this Park is to assess the validity of, or the quality of instruction. Are we really teaching what we think we're teaching? And the validity of learning, are students really learning what they're supposed to be learning? So, that's, that's some of the data that hopefully is going to come out of this Park test to, to verify that the teachers are teaching appropriately or effectively, and students are gaining in intelligence as they hear it go off.
I'm, I'm on board. Um, I think that, again, perception becomes reality. Perception is right now that it's a over, this is just perception, overcomplicated test, sample questions at college level, um, people that actually teach cannot answer on their own. And that, it'll make the kids feel inadequate. Now, if that's a perception, that's not true. And, and you, I think, alluded to it, then, you know, I know that some music, I think, in the simplified version for the parents, maybe like ninety percent of your parents aren't understanding, we start getting ASs and this, and like, almost a one-page, easy to read, um, watered down. Simpler the better, just for your, you know, and then you're going to have your other ten percent that'll go a step farther and ask her, might have gone to college or already themselves. But I think for now, it, it sounds like a lot of the concern is that people are going to want to buck taking the test, they're going to want to slander the test. The test has benefits of use. Kid died out that simple, that's a fact.
And I would add, but another part of that also, I think, is probably, we're all used to true, false, A, B, C, D, pick an answer. This test does not test that way. So, so it may not have a correct answer. It may be, is it, we're going to test where you have A, B, C, and D, and all four are correct. And A might be four points, and B might be worth two points, and so forth and so on. There really is no right or wrong. If they need to understand how great.
Children are a part of what their parents said. They're just, they're just going to say, and they'll pass, and they're back. I mean, parents are these, one of the best points, or maybe our kids learn different than us. Those of my children are better than me on my computers, my iPads. When I have something at home with my computer, I don't fix it, I go to all my kids. My eight-year-old over there knows more about the iPods and all this stuff than I do already. So, parents.
And that's why, like, if you and I were to sit down, we would struggle.
You would probably struggle on the test.
And we would be like, whoa, 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 wait a minute, I can, I can write this. I, I could write, I, I could write this, but Leo and Sam can drag it, click it, paste it, and, and they like, you know?
So, then again, I, I think, like you said, it's simpler, something simple to the parents, especially in the town, because there's, I was one. You know, I'd be lying, I'd say, when my wife started reading stuff about it on Facebook, and immediately, your immediate response is, this is nonsense, that, you know.
When the time is right, dummy deal. I mean, we do it with the budget, we've done with the budget for years, I mean.
Well, yeah, we can also have a little, like, a little, uh, and I, and I think another thing that is happening right now is that there's a lot of negativity in our surrounding towns. Not necessarily here, there may only be a few people here, but there's like, like, the, Belmar is having a meeting, and there's Facebook group, opt-out Belmar parents, and then Gloucester Township, there's a lot of issues. So, then all of their friends and cousins and saying what's, saying what's happening, and it's trickling down here a little bit, not, not a whole lot, but a little bit, because I saw the same thing you saw, and I immediately contacted both of them. So, um, it probably, it, it needs to be done sooner rather than later. I mean, I would do it sooner rather than later, in my opinion.
That's all, that's all I'm explaining. It doesn't have to put the facts, it just, this is a general, and it's not it over, I don't think you're, you know, it's a knee-jerk reaction, or, but just relax.
Where we are as a district.
Yes, where we're at, it's, it's not, it's not overcomplicated. Here's where at, this is the benefits. There is really, where you're saying, no consequences.
Any other questions, Ashish? Thank you, Dr. McCarron.
Absolutely.
The boss needs permission, the boss needs permission to get on.
So, at this time, in the, um.
I love it.
He, it says you need permission. I said, does that really say you need permission? So, um, at this time, now that Dr. McCarron's over, we'll just go through the, uh, agenda real quick to see if anybody has any questions. So, um, if you can get your regular meeting agenda up, um, you, you know, if there's any questions, um, we want to scroll down and start on page, uh, three, under reports. Are you good? I'm on page three. Naomi? I got it.
That's okay, we have this iPad.
You have it?
Always.
Oh, it's perfect.
I didn't mind.
I was actually reading this before we go through it. If you have any questions, so I'm going to start on page three, under these. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on reports at this time? No? All right, I'm going to keep going up, so I'm on page four now. Property and transportation, it looks like we have used the facilities and some field trips. Any questions there?
It's right, but.
I'm sure you know, right?
Yes.
It's different, but they usually get, they're not focusing on basketball, and.
Any other questions there? All right, if there's no questions on the field trips and use of facilities, I'll move up to personnel. I'm on the top of page five now. Under personnel, we have some tuition reimbursements and some long-term, so um substitutes that need approval, a student, physical therapist, and a medical leave and us, an employee moving from bachelors to masters. Any questions there? No? If not, I'm going to move along to finance. There's a ton of um professional development workshops listed there. And then just some monthly, you know, payment of bills. It looks like number four is a student um on instruction. Any questions there? Am I going too fast? Joe, are you good?
Yeah, I have questions at the end, I know, I just have, if I have something I could ask, I'll.
Okay, so I'm on, go ahead.
I have a question with uh the May eleventh legislative committee meeting. Uh I noticed at home when I was reading through uh information, I had a confirmation notice come down from New Jersey School Board that I I was registered to attend that meeting, but I'm not here. I was confused.
It'll be on in the February.
May third. Because I just felt that maybe there's some things that are gonna go on at that meeting that I could carry over when I go to the delegate assembly.
So we'll add your name to that there?
Yeah, because I got a confirmation from them.
Okay, so, so we're gonna actually add Chaz to the May third. Okay, under curriculum, there's four items, a practicum, course approval, and a HIM specialist. Harassment, intimidation, bullying, that's a new law. That you'll get plenty of information about at your school board member training. That is so fun.
It's a comprehensive investigation, it has to take place if a child feels they've been bullied in any way or intimidated by somebody.
It's a process of, oh, make sure that it's answered up. Within a certain time.
And then we have a yearly, we have a, not yearly, it's twice a year report given to us and a monthly, like if there was any HIM, that's what we call it for short, if there was any HIM, you know, told or investigated in our buildings, we know about on a monthly basis. They let us know.
Under numbers three, there's payments, I'm not sure, it says payments of bills, bills list attached. What, where are those numbers?
Those numbers are under each of the ones, what bills have been paid and the dates that those bills went out. None of the checks will go out until after it's approved for the final meeting. And all, everything that's getting approved tonight is in the attachment of the bills lists that you receive. So you can see the payroll from the fifteenth, payroll from the twenty-third. And those are the amount of the payrolls on the dates.
All employees of the district. And secretaries and administration and everybody.
District office.
District office, everybody.
Accounts payable. So it's batch sixty-three and sixty-five, so that would be any of our vendors who who were paying out for that month for services. So we work on a purchase order system, which means that we provide them with a purchase order saying that once services are provided, we'll pay you for them after they're provided. Um that's what most school districts and businesses do work off of. And then once we have to sign off, because it's a process, once the final person signs off that the services have been received, it then goes to the business office and we then run the checks.
Your vendors are everything from your groundskeeping to your food to your.
Groundskeeping we have in-house, because, um what if we buy supplies for groundskeeping or we purchase anything like that, that would be in our accounts payable batches.
As well as PSE, everything, everything is all of our.
That's every, every expense outside of salary.
Yes.
Basically doing.
Like I, like the the.
Every single expense outside of.
The benefits?
Like all the checks that.
When I wasn't being rude, I was listening.
Yeah. And then, so it says bills list number five, there's nothing on there that's.
Bills list five would be another accounts payable run that we did connect as a final one, which is why usually we'll always tell you that there'll be a final bills list attached just because we want to try and pay, we try to stay in good graces with our vendors as much as possible. So we try to pay everyone as quickly as we can, um once services are received.
Cafeteria, and so it's your payroll or salaries, cafeteria and that's separate from everything else.
Are paying to Black Forest Bike regional, because they provide with lunches. Are paying at the High Point, providing food, milk and um ice cream, getting to US Foods, all snacks and things that we do.
So just to put your, uh, put this in perspective for you.
Mm-hmm.
So you see bill list number three?
Yep.
All of, that's a pretty hefty amount there.
Yeah.
Just the one check for benefits was two hundred and forty-one thousand sixty-two dollars and a unit cents. But you can go on the attachment here and see every single line item.
I was going through the attachments and I just, I didn't understand it. Now, you know, so you've seen something like, it's where it said like art supplies, it reads at seventy-seven thousand, and there were two numbers next to it, I wasn't sure exactly.
Art supplies?
I thought it.
That's some good supplies.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, AIT supplies. That's technology.
Because I don't wanna make it bigger, I can see the.
So that would be any.
I was gonna say, I didn't think we were building a mission.
And when you itemize it, it says old amount, so the old amount says seventy-seven thousand. It says adjustment five hundred and fifty, new balance is seventy-seven thousand five hundred.
That's within that line item. So that's what was, so the old amount would be how much was in the line item, the new balance would be what we.
So it's saying that as a district, we still owe seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty.
No, what we have in that line, we're going to stay.
But we said budgeted.
Budgeted for the year.
We still have that left.
Okay, so the old adjustment was your, is your budget.
Correct.
The adjustment is what you've either spent or got credit to, it was above it, or it's just a five hundred, because you all credit.
In most cases, yeah.
And then to the right is what you have since we're beginning of the year. The new balance is basically gonna be just with the month of December or January, I'm sorry, January, I guess.
Well, actually, we're kind of, at this point, we're kind of slowing down on the year because we're down in January, so I'm actually starting on budget for fifteen, sixteen school year, which um that was in attachment tonight. But for the most part, a lot of our spending is taking place July one through end of August, because we're getting everything in in-house. Then throughout the month, so you'll see very large bills lists, um come August is like the largest one, because it's all teacher supplies that we're never ordering for the year. And then, um, that's what we're making.
So that, that, what is, what is the year for the budget, when to start that?
From July one, region.
Our year is July one.
All right, so on July first, the old amount will always change or may stay the same. But the new balance will always be the year of, or fresh, the new balance will always be the same.
For each school budget though, we still have to come out of the budget with funds left.
We need extra budget money.
To balance the budget for the bottom of the year. So that's why you might not see one of the budget lines go all the way down. We might be using a part of that budget line, actually balance the budget for the next year and try and keep, you know, our spending where we need it.
What else you have? Come on, keep going, we have three minutes. It's the one I'm leaving.
On the very bottom, it is, so the very bottom of the, I'm looking at just the first page, it says total year-to-date distribution adjustment, there's a zero at the bottom.
Where are you at, page one?
I'm on page five of December expense, the very first.
Oh, you're on the first, I don't know that's.
Anyway, so when you're going through the agenda.
The attachments.
When you do the attachments, I'm pretty sure I'm in um, this is bills list one. Running me board of education, it tops as expense account adjustment analysis by adjustment current cycle December. And the first top two things are the AIT open supplies, twenty-six, seventy-seven. Is there anywhere here, if you're winning total, where you're at for the year's?
If you go all the way to the last page, page six, on the very bottom.
Page five, page five.
Go on the first bill, let's correct, bills list one.
Bills list one, so you get six, it gives you the.
So on the very bottom, funds ten and eleven, you'll see them on the left-hand side. Fund categories, fund ten, that's your general fund. That's what's applied through local tax levy and what we bring in through school taxes. So if you go all the way right, it'll tell you out of that fund, how much money went out for hand checks. Hand checks none, accounts payable, and then the total checks given out. When you go down to fund twenty, that's your grants, so that's like IDA, which is special education. That's your title one, that's the LP, title two. On the page six, on the left-hand side, because you were looking for total amounts, right?
Yeah.
And then fund six is your cafeteria accounts. Cafeteria, we run on a month-to-month basis, we can't really hold a surplus within the cafeteria, because it's a joint-owned business. So we have money in, money out, and that should always be as close to zero as possible.
Like you?
Because we don't want to use that there to spend for food service.
Are you good?
I was worried more as we go, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to reserve it all.
Ten years later, I still don't absorb them that much, but listen. You call them, you come here whenever you need questions, or Angel, or myself, anyone, all of us. But especially now. Mm-hmm, if you're off this night, you wanna come and talk, call me up and we can come and talk, okay? Any other questions? No? All right, I'm going to um begin the regular meeting then, because there are our students um waiting. Okay, so it is.